Reminds me of my mom.
Your mom?
I lost my mom nineteen years ago, and she used to always happen in the house, and my kids always bring her around.
Okay, we're gonna get started tonight?
Come now.
Good evening, welcome to the August thirteenth zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter Fark, who's a deputy planning manager for the city of Nashua. Across the way, we have Mr. Nick Canakis, Mr. Stephen Lionel, who acts as our vice chair, Mr. Jamin Kara's not here yet, usually comes in right on time, so if he's coming in, when he comes in, we'll address him then, Mr. Robert Shaw, Mr. Jack Carrier, who will act as our secretary tonight, Ms. Estafia Boris, and I'm JP Boucher, acting as your chair tonight. This meeting is recorded by written transcript, audio tape, and video. We ask that you please direct all testimony into the microphone, and that only one person speak at a time. Welcome, Mr. Mancara. If you do not already have a copy of the tonight's agenda, you'll find it on the table in the rear of the auditorium. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviations from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: one, the requested use must be listed in the table of use regulations as a special exception; two, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety; three, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, sewer system, or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare; four, any special regulation for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinances are fulfilled; and five, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of a variance are: one, the variance will not be contrary to public interest; two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; three, substantial justice is done; four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and five, the literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear any and all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the city of Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can finally appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part of tonight's meeting is called a public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of this case. The order of testimony is as follows. First, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then, those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then those in opposition or with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then the applicant has five minutes to speak and rebuttal, and then finally, a representative and only one person of those in opposition or with questions will have five minutes to speak and rebuttal. We ask that you please again direct all testimony to this board and not to anyone in the audience. If you have a question about an application, they have to be directed to the board, and we'll get them answered. The second part of tonight's meeting is called a public meeting. This is where the board debates the merits of this case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you please silence your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, we ask you to step out in the hallway. This is an auditorium, it has excellent acoustics, so we can hear everything that's being said in the room. The other thing tonight, you'll notice, is the time clock up on the stage here. So when I just spoke about how many minutes each of you have to speak, Mr. Fark controls the time clock. He will set the time clock, you'll see it go green, and as it counts down, it'll go orange and then to red. So once you get on to a minute, you'll know when you have a minute left. So we will be following that system tonight very rigidly, so just wanted you to be aware of that, so that you can use your time as best as you wish you want to use your time, okay? Mr. Fark, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Is anybody in the audience that has any questions before we start the meeting tonight? Okay, seeing none. I will call case number one. Owner is Interconnect Investments in GMAC Properties. Applicant's GMAC Properties. Address is seven nine and eleven Domain Avenue. The description is Interconnect Investments LLC and GMAC Properties LLC. Owner is GMAC Properties LLC. Applicant, seven nine eleven Domain Avenue Sheets H Lots eighty-two, one forty-one, one twenty-eight, requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash fifteen. Table fifteen dash one, number fifteen, to remove two existing single-family homes and construct a total of eighteen multifamily units in three separate buildings along the associated improvements. This was tabled from the July ninth, two thousand, meeting. It's in the zoning district PI and GB zones. Before we get started, there are only five members that are allowed to vote on each case. Tonight, we have four full-time members. Alternate members are Mr. Nick Canakis, Mr. Jamin Kara, and Ms. Estafia Boris. So on case number one, Mr. Canakis will vote, and on case number four, and then Ms. Boris will vote on case number two and number five, and Mr. Jamin Kara will vote on case number three and case number six, unless either one of them have to recuse themselves. So that will be a total of five official voting members for each case. In all our proceedings, during the public hearing, in the public meeting, each member, no matter if they are voting or not, has the ability to ask questions and discuss the case and put any input that they have. So the only thing that they cannot do is the two alternate members that are not scheduled to vote, will just will not vote at the end when we take our vote. Again, does anybody have any questions about that before we get started? Okay, any questions as we go along, we'll be more than happy to answer them. Welcome, sir, and name and address.
Good evening. Nathan Chamberlain, professional engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants.
Okay, and again, you were here on July, yes, July ninth?
Yes. I personally wasn't, but a representative of our firm was.
So in that case, all testimony that was given and presentations are all on the records, and we have that. So go ahead, sir. Thank you.
All right, I just want to ask some.
Sure.
Do we have the document projector there for that table? So you can use that table?
It's kind of a big.
Eight and a half by eleven.
Apologize.
Yeah. Need to get a bigger one.
Quite a few of the new technology.
We're a survey and engineering firm out of Milford, New Hampshire, and been hired to do a residential development on the lots in question. And as was stated, we were here last month, and there was a lot of questions. Well, it was really three main sticking points that the board had, which was the densities we're proposing, the, the, sorry, the, and spirit intent, as it applies to the ordinance, and the, why the properties couldn't be developed in a fashion that doesn't need a use variance. So we are here for a use variance, for a residential use in the, primarily the PI zone, and there's a little bit in the general business zone as well. The site is located off of Amherst Street, down, basically across in the community college. It's a little quiet residential street, Duhame Street, with limited access. There's no, it's right in, right out only from Amherst Street, and then it loops back around onto Dearborn? Deerwood, I'm sorry. Deerwood, loops back around to Deerwood, which does outlet onto a signalized intersection. So, right off the bat, when you look at why this can't be developed as a commercial use or industrial use that is allowed into the zone, you are limited by the access. So first of all, the three properties in question are off the main, the main road, if you look at the overall map here, and we're back in here. So we don't have any frontage in Amherst Street, there's no visibility, and the access is an issue because you can't take it lefts and rights out of there, it's not signalized or anything. They can loop around, but still, that's not going to function well for a commercial entity. Another consideration is why this can't be developed as a commercial use. There's plenty of storefronts, there's plenty of retail space available out on Amherst Street where you do have the visibility. If there was a prospective buyer, you know, like a startup or something, they're gonna want to go to least, least basis available, because there's less cost, obviously, less upfront cost. And then as far as, if you had a standalone business, you're gonna want that visibility and access. If you're gonna make the kind of investment that's required to purchase these three properties and do a full-scale development. And then as far as industrial use, we don't feel that the properties are large enough for that, to support industrial use of any size. And there's plenty of industrial use land back off in here, where it has been developed as a little industrial park, and there's vacant areas in there as well, for if somebody wanted to do with something larger, they could do it back in there. As far as the spirit and intent, I think the whole purpose of the zoning ordinance is to prevent against haphazard development, and to make sure that it meets the safety and welfare of the city of Nashua. And I think this development does do that. It's gonna be new construction, it's gonna provide relatively low-cost housing, which is, as we all know, is a shortage of, and it fits the neighborhood. Granted, this is zoned, park industrial, but this whole street is residential currently, and as far, and the adjoining streets, Dearborn, or Deerwood, have been developed just recently, and actually, they're still building them as multifamily, so we obviously fit the neighborhood with this development. And, and finally, the board questioned the density calculation, the amount of density we're proposing. So we did go back, and we took a look at that density, and we have reshaped the plan and resubmitted it, what we're presenting here tonight. So, this is what we came with last month. There was concerns about the proximity to the front setback, so this, this particular lot is in the general business zone, so it had a less of a front setback than the PI zone, which has a thirty-foot setback. So like a good, you know, developer, we maximized what was available to us. Well, we've, we heard your concerns, that you would prefer to have it lined up and have a consistent setback across the property. So we revised the plan, so we dropped a unit off this building, and we pushed that back to thirty feet. Actually, I think it's thirty-one. And then, we dropped another unit in the middle, because it's a little tight in here, so we wanted to provide more green space in between, you know, the parking fields and the other units, so we dropped a unit in here. So basically, we went from eighteen units down to sixteen units. And this is more consistent with what's permitted in your zoning under the RC zone, which is, we're kind of gearing this towards. And you asked us to look at the density in the surrounding areas, so we, the color map pretty much does that. So, we are right here, and we were at eighteen units, which equates to basically three thousand three hundred and forty square feet per unit, which is slightly below what's allowed in the RC zone, which is twelve and a half units per acre, which works out to around thirty-four, thirty-four eighty, I think, per unit. So now, we were below that, and now we're above it. So currently, at sixteen units, we are at thirty-seven fifty-seven square feet per unit. And if we look at these other developments that are already either done or under construction, this condo development's down here off of Deerwood, they vary. So the one they're building right now is that, is on the higher side, it's around four thousand three hundred and sixty square feet per unit, but the other ones are less, and so we're at three thousand three hundred and eighty-two for the one that's already built, and then, that's a seventeen-unit condo, a one point three two acres, and then a fourteen-unit condo, a one point one eight acres, equates to thirty-six seventy-one square feet per unit. Then the apartments, obviously, is way down at twenty-five forty, give or take, per unit. So as far as the density, you know, we heard your concerns, we revised the plan, and we submitted it, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight. And, you know, as was stated, the location, I think, is ideal, I think it's a good development. You're taking three properties that are in a relatively sad shape. I mean, one of them has a fairly new double-wide on it, but these are gonna be, you know, high-quality construction, and really fill a need in the city of Nashua. And, again, as stated before, we don't see this site being developed as a commercial use or industrial use, based on its location, the access to the site, and I don't think the abutters would want to see a commercial industrial use go in here either, across some of these single-family residential houses that are on the other side of Duhame. I mean, I'm sorry. And, we do think this, this meets the spirit of the ordinance. It's, it's gonna be safe, and be in the good welfare of the, of the citizens. It just meets the needs of the community in large. It's gonna increase the tax base of what's there now, because instead of three single-family homes, you're gonna have sixteen units of high-quality construction. And I think we have provided for safe access with our proposed entrances, and, you know, if they need to get, if they need to go east, they'll have to come out the signal, they'll go that way, and vice versa if they're coming home. I think that, I think that summarizes, you know, a resubmission. As stated, we were here last month, and I think we've addressed your concerns. If there's any questions you might have, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
So.
You deliberate after all the hearings?
Yeah, hold on. Well, we gotta go through a process to see if anybody else wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So you can sit down if you'd like for a moment. Is there anything else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody that would like to speak in opposition or with questions or concerns regarding this Okay, seeing none. I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Carrier.
Well, I guess, you know, I appreciate the applicant, you know, in consideration of the board's comments of lowering the density, particularly with that front yard setback. I guess I'm, I'm finding myself struggling with the same question we had last week, or I had, I think we all had, certainly I had, which was, we, or at least I feel that, and I'm kind of repeating what I said last week, but it, certainly it's zoned park industrial, but this stretch of houses on the two streets, you know, has been single-family home since its inception, and I, I see it as, while I agree, a lot of the testimony tonight, or all of it, has been about, you know, inappropriate for park industrial, which I don't disagree with, it's, it's been a fine-functioning, single-family neighborhood, and I still see it that way now. I went back and took another look, and, you know, as you get over to the next street, there's certainly a lot of higher-density apartment complexes, but I think going from essentially a density of three to sixteen, if that were applied across the board to other properties here, it would be rezoning the whole spot, but I'm, so I'm, I'm struggling with the application, but I'm looking forward to hearing other opinions on it.
Mr. Shaw.
I think I'm kind of at the same spot as Mr. Carrier. I appreciate the, what was addressed, I, I mean, although I'm, I guess, you know, I appreciate the fact that there's the argument about the concern about not being able to do any sort of true PI or commercial-type business there, but it's also, seems pretty clear that there's not, hasn't been any actual attempt to, you know, consider truly marketing the properties that way or pursuing that, and, and maybe very well, it might be kind of a, a very difficult case, and the fact that, on, on the kind of flip side of that is that the street is very residential, so trying to encourage some sort of non-residential function there, I think is, will probably have some difficulty. I'm not sure I'm totally convinced of that, the fact that it's still so proximal to Amherst Street, and that it has access to the signalized intersection, even having to basically go over a street, to me, I think that actually alleviates some of the, or at least argues somewhat against part of the reason it wouldn't be viable. But, I think ultimately, there's still this concern that we're, we're kind of being asked to rezone this section, not just provide relief, and we're trying to, we're still faced, and I think Mr. Mancar did a good job of really kind of putting this out there last time, but that this has been functioning as single-family residential, and yet, going to an RC type of density, which is what this essentially is, is a pretty significant difference. And while I recognize and agree, there's this, there is this higher density on the other side, and this board approved those couple developments that are going on right now, I think that also was somewhat driven by the fact that situated across from the high-density residential apartments, it still has a very different feel on that street versus this street, so I guess I'm just, I'm not sure that I can be convinced that there's sufficient justification ultimately to approve this to our criteria, but I still want to hear what my fellow board members have to say.
Yeah, I, I think I, I echo the concerns, and on both sides, you know, for, from both of you, continue to have the same concerns I had previously. I will say, though, to the applicant's credit, I, I was happy to see that they did in fact address the issue of the challenge of, of developing the lots in a manner consistent with zoning. We didn't have any testimony that I recall related to that, and at least, the density reduction has some rational basis, whereas before, I felt it was arbitrary. But I, I do still continue to share concerns about, are we rezoning?
I, I, my concerns are, again, with, with the rezoning. So if that question were to be answered, or if I felt satisfied that, you know, not being in an opposition, and I know how else to explain it, I think that's what I'm struggling with the most, is if in fact, we could get over the hurdle of the zone, that we're in the PI zone, I, in my, my position, I'm comfortable with this project, and I, and again, I'm, not to justify it, but I think, again, applicant did address the issues that we had. I do think that it fits into this, this neighborhood. It's such a unique neighborhood, and I really do think that, my personal opinion is, is that it would be hard for me to see anybody trying to develop that or to go there unless I own some business where I don't have anybody really coming to my business, you know, like, maybe I own a landscaping business, and I'm using it for, you know, to put, you know, whatever, all my equipment there, and I'm just running in and out of there. To, to look at anything else going in there, I guess I look at it as like, okay, I'm running a business there, some type of commercial industrial business, and I'm, I'm gonna get deliveries every day, tractor trailers or whatever, so what are they gonna do to get in the project? What does that bring me in, and, or am I running some other type of business where I need people to come? So I think there is some validity to where it is, but I also think that the lots, in and it solves each lot is by itself, and I know the project is a combined lot, but what I found it interesting was, is that, is that none of the abutters that live on that street, we didn't hear from one abutter, right, that said, oh my God, I don't want any housing here. So it's almost like conversely, that, either they're absent type of landlords, I think, or they're saying, hey, I would rather have homes there than it developed as an industrial commercial use. I'm just surmising that. So, so that's where, where I stand right now. Mr. Shaw.
Sorry, I feel like I want to call you out on it. You said, if we could only kind of get past the fact that it's in the PI zone, that's a whole big question we have, that we're being asked, right? So, and I think that's really, I agree, I mean, in one sense, but that's the problem we've got, that it is, it's zoned for something other than the way it's historically been used, but then, I still feel like we're kind of left with what has been historically there as a street full of single-family homes, and I don't know that there's any reason why the argument can't be made, also, that that street could be completely redeveloped through some period of time with a bunch of single-family homes, that I realize there might be some differing opinions about what the marketability of that is, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of people that want to have access to, you know, goods and services, so if you're living right off of Amherst Street, you've got a lot of access to shopping and dining and different things, so you don't have to go very far. So for some people, that might be still very appealing, so I, I guess I see viability in, with these lots in this neighborhood of maintaining the function that it's had, and if it's really kind of destined to become something else, whether that's an RC or some other residential zone there, then I think we're still back to, that's the job for the Board of Aldermen, to come back and look at rezoning that portion of land, and, you know, we just, there was just some rezoning just down the street on Amherst Street, that, you know, I think some of the businesses might have actually basically petitioned for that drove some of that conversion. Granted, it wasn't between residential and PI or GB or whatever, it was, I think, just between like PI, GB, HB, whichever ones, but still nonetheless, that process is always out there and always available. I mean, I think unfortunately, it's also been a shortcoming of, for whatever reason, this pocket probably, I think, should have had some sort of residential zoning associated with it a long time ago. It maybe just didn't really have any advocacy from, from that regard, and there's such a mix of things going on here, it's very difficult, you also get in these tiny pockets. So I guess I'm still left with not seeing how we just move from relatively low-density residential to relatively high-density residential.
Just wanted to pick up on one other thing, just to speak more to the density. These lots are somewhere around R nine to R eighteen. This whole street is R nine to R eighteen. If this application were not approved, the board's not saying you must put a park industrial in there. The board's saying, well, it's probably somewhere between R nine and R eighteen now, and you're asking for RC. And, and I think a couple of us feel, well, that, that's too much. I mean, it's perfectly fine the way it is now, it's somewhere between R nine and R eighteen, and that matches the rest of the street, and RC is, I guess some of those fields is too dense, so I just wanted to clarify that. You know, the, the density issue that I'm hung on is, is, it's a request to go from the existing density to an RC. The PI part of it is really not in, in, I agree with everything that's said, but it's perfectly fine as an R nine to R eighteen now, and I don't see why RC is necessary.
Mr. Lionel.
I'm sort of in the, in the same frame of mind as Mr. Shaw, in that, you know, the project as it's, as it appears, it seems nice, but the zoning is what the zoning is, and our job is not to rezone parts of the city. and our job is not to rezone parts of the city. Yes, the, that area is largely single-family residential, and at least that street is, from what I can tell. Putting in a dense multifamily doesn't seem to be quite in character. Truly, I don't, I don't see that that street is a good fit for PI, GB either, but that's what it is. And I agree that, you know, this should be taken up with the Board of Aldermen to see if a rezoning is appropriate.
Thank you. So I guess that was kind of where, my point was, for me, was if, if really it's PI zone, then at this point, I would, for me, would just say, I would, I would vote to deny the application and come back when it's rezoned. I mean, that's where I would be standing at this point, and I was trying to get that feeling.
I think I misunderstood your thing.
Yeah, and I'm sorry. And sometimes I, I, so, so that's kind of where I was going. I was just wanting to lead into that. So, Mr. Knakis, I know you are voting on this case, so.
I agree with most of what everyone else has said. I think it's a great-looking development, and it just doesn't quite fit in with the single-family nature of the neighborhood. And I think we'd just be going a bit beyond the scope of our duties by going ahead and just allowing that type of development to go into this zone.
All right. If there's no more discussion, if anybody wants to make a motion, Mr. Shaw.
I'd like to motion on behalf of owner Interconnected Investments and GMAC Properties. The applicant is GMAC Properties. The address is 79 and 11 Domain Avenue. The request is for a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 15, to remove two existing single-family homes and construct a total of 18 multifamily units in three separate buildings along with associated improvements. This is in the PI and GB zone. My motion is going to be for denial of this variance. We don't believe that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, or at least it's not appropriate, that the special conditions of the property, while there is an issue with the fact that this is PI and GB zone, historically, this has been single-family homes, and this usage would be significantly and drastically more dense than the current usage. So it would not be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Again, right now, the neighborhood and the usage that is present is as single-family homes on this street. We did note and did discuss that there is greater density around the, on the next street, but there was already a greater presence of higher-density parcels there. And we're still dealing with the fact that this is still not a residentially-zoned section. There's, I'm not, it's not clear that there would be negative or positive effects on property values of surrounding parcels, but we believe it's not contrary, that it is contrary to public interest, excuse me, and substantial justice would not be done by approving this. So again, I move to deny this area variance.
Second by Mr. Carrier. Any discussion? All those in favor of denying the application? That's five to nothing. Sorry, sorry, application's been denied. There is a third-day window of appeal. So with that, I'll close case number one, and we'll give the gentleman a few minutes to pull down his drawings.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming. I'd like to open the public hearing for case number two for Kathleen Paulson, applicant Christopher Long, 27 Serota Avenue. Description is Kathleen K. Paulson, owner of Christopher Long, applicant 27 Serota Avenue, Sheet D, Lot 22, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory-in-law dwelling unit to the R40 zone, Ward 5, in the R40 zoning district. Welcome. Name and address, please.
My name is Christopher Long. I live at 27 Serota Avenue. I'm, as you mentioned, I'm applying on behalf of my mother-in-law, Kathleen Paulson. So we're looking to build an accessory dwelling unit within the basement of the residence. As was submitted with the application, it's a 748 square foot, including kitchen, bathroom, one bedroom. There's really not, not a whole lot to it.
Okay.
Is there any other, any other details that you'd like to hear beyond what's in the application?
Your application's with, so again, just clearly, there will be no, there's, the rear door will be used for the entrance. So basically, there'll be no alterations to the property at all from the exterior point of view. No one will know.
No, no changes to traffic, no changes to parking, no changes to the exterior. All construction will take place within the four walls of the building.
Yes. Are you familiar with the accessory dwelling unit, special conditions?
Yes, and I believe they've all been met.
Excuse me?
Yes, and I believe they've all been met.
Okay. Okay, they're all met. All right. So I won't go through those. So you're saying that they've all been met?
Yes.
Any of the members wish that I go through all those? Okay. Mr. Lino?
Given that this is a, you know, a condo association, do the association bylaws have anything to say regarding creation of an ADU? I'm, I'm not familiar with what they may or may not say.
No, this one specifically does not.
Any other questions?
No.
Nope. Okay, thank you. You may be back up. Okay. Anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of the application? All right, anybody with questions, concerns, is it questions, concerns, or in favor?
In favor.
Sir, you had your hand up. Are you in favor or, or questions?
Either in favor or against.
Right.
But I'd like to raise some issues.
Sure, sure. We'll give, we'll have you up in a second. So anybody else that'd like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, seeing none. Those with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application, come on up. And just your name and address, please, sir.
My name's Mark Dietering.
The microphone's over there. Sorry about that.
My name's Mark Dietering. I live at 43 Diamondback. And I'm here as a follow-up to a letter that I submitted, and a similar letter was submitted by several other owners and residents of Rotten Woods. And as I said, as indicated in our letter, we're not pushing for acceptance or denial. We think there's some special circumstance here that we would like the board to be aware of and to consider prior to making its decision. And that being that we are, in Rotten Woods, we have a number of shared septic systems. And those systems and the site plan would have originally been approved based on the number of bedrooms in homes that feed those systems. And our, our concern is that as additional bedrooms get added, we don't want to find that we've, or that someone has allowed that to exceed the capacity of our shared septic systems. And it could be that adding one bedroom is not a problem, but if multiple people on a shared septic system wanted to add bedrooms, perhaps that could cause, one, the system's capacity to be exceeded, or two, to significantly decrease the longevity of the system. And the board maintains a reserve fund. How much we put into that reserve fund every year is designed based on the expected longevity of the system. And if that's changed, the thing is that the way the organization, the association is set up is that every owner, over 100 different owners, share in the cost of maintaining all of the septic systems. So if someone on Serota, or the system on Serota goes over its capacity, the owners on all the other streets are going to be affected by the ramifications of that financially. So what our concern is, one, that we don't overstep capacity now, and two, and/or affect longevity of the system now, which I would imagine probably one bedroom isn't going to do. But does this create a precedent for the board that if other applications come before you, that because you've approved someone, you have to have consistent decisions and that you're unable to deny someone else when additional bedrooms on other units, if there's a precedent established, do we have an exposure there that could cause us problems? So that's number one. The second aspect of lesser concern, but should also be thought about is parking. We do have streets, because we're a homeowners' association, where the streets are narrower than the normal spec that the city would build to. And if additional bedrooms are created that cause the need to park vehicles in the street, then we have a problem that two cars can't normally pass each other. Again, I don't believe that's a problem on the cul-de-sac where 27 is. But again, if this were precedent-setting, it could very much be a problem elsewhere in our development. So as I stated in the letter, and the other owners stated in their letter, we would just like to have this thoroughly thought through. And if there's additional research that's needed, have that done before a decision is made. And it would also help us go to our association and highlight if we need to take action to deal with this ourselves in the future, that we're able to do that. Thank you.
Any questions?
Hi.
Mr. Lino has a question, sir. Sir, come on back. We have, we have a member with a question here. Mr. Lino.
Okay. Couple things. Let's see. First of all, there's no precedence set. We are free to deny or accept any individual application, no matter what happened before. We get this question a lot. You know, well, you approved that, why didn't you, why didn't you approve me? So that, that's one aspect. Parking, one of the requirements that the applicant has to agree to, and said they agree to, is, where are we? One additional off-street, off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family home. So the applicant has stated that he meets that requirement. So there should not be any impact on on-street parking. Whether there is or not, I don't, I don't know. And your letter says something about a trailer parked there. We can't, there's not.
I would assume they've got two garage bays, and the driveway fits two cars, so.
Yeah.
Both bays and the driveway, I would assume that would handle four cars, in fairness to them.
Yep.
Surely. Some of our driveways are longer than others.
Yeah.
I might also mention that our bylaws do not author, do not provide the Board of Directors the ability to deny an owner from adding a, an in-law apartment. The only, the only thing that our bylaws allow the board to deny for is if somebody's trying to change grading and water flow such that it would flood another owner's land. We're trying to stay out of the approval business. We'd rather have the city in that. But since there's no city ordinance about that, we added that this year.
Yeah, the, when the state changed the required rules about ADUs to make them much less restrictive, this, I assume that, that your community bylaws were written before that change. And nobody thought about that, so, but.
They would have been written in 2004, had various amendments along the way.
Now, as far as, as the septic goes, it's interesting that, you know, the rules that we operate by for granting a variance relates to public sewer and doesn't say anything about overloading shared private septic. So although your concern is quite reasonable, I'm not sure that's something that we can take into consideration when looking at this application. That, you know, there are many things that we're not, we're not allowed to consider. For example, financial impact is not something we look at. But, you know, I, your, your concern is absolutely valid. I'm not sure what we can do about it, though.
Okay. Well, as I said, we just wanted to bring this forward and ensure that it was thought about. And it's certainly, I think, going to get our association thinking. And if there's any perspective that Carter could provide down the road to us, we'd be happy to have that discussion without taking your time here this evening.
Yeah. It, it might be that, that your, your board might need to consider amending its bylaws to, to take this sort of thing into consideration. Because you're right, you know, that if everybody, everybody in the, in the community added another bedroom and another person, that could well overload the shared septic system.
And there are factors. I mean, they have to have the right-sized lot to allow for it and so on, so.
Right.
You know, we're not saying that everybody's going to do this. We just want to ensure to be fair to everybody involved.
Thank you.
Including these applicants. Thank you.
Well, we have, we have more questions.
Excuse me, sir.
My thoughts were addressed by Mr. Lino.
We have another question here.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's actually first, it's kind of a follow-up, but it's really, I wanted to actually ask Mr. Falk. It might change where I go. So when, when the, if the, this gets approved, when the ADU, they have to go for a building permit, correct?
Yep.
So would, would consideration of the septic come into play in terms of issuing the, the building permit in this kind of situation? I just, that was the one thing I wasn't sure, if there's something that kind of helps the system or if in the case, because it's a single-bedroom addition, that the size would probably already accommodate it. I don't know even if that's judged for something like that.
They will look at it. I mean, they, they'll look at the whole building permit for exactly what the applicant wants to do. So it would be reviewed. You know, the biggest thing, like at least for us, is the kitchen. You know, if they were putting in a new bedroom, new bathroom, new hallway, new dining room, it really wouldn't matter to us. They wouldn't even be here. It's really the kitchen that is making them come here for one extra kitchen, for the ADU. So that's what really, what this board reviews, extra kitchen, so. And I know they're, you know, the association is concerned, like, in this entire development, I think this is the first one that's come through to this board for an ADU. We don't get that many of them a year. We may get 10 or so a year for the whole city. So it's not like everybody, every house is going to have an ADU. There, there are a lot of money to put one in, and there's a lot of other circumstances that go along with them. But, you know, not to make light of their concerns, but.
I realize it's an unusual situation, and, and again, I'm, I'm here as an owner with other owners, not as part of the governing body of the association. If we need to address it with them, we will. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, so. We have, we received a letter from the same letter that Mr. Dietering spoke about. Okay, so I'm not going to read this on the record, that Mr. Dietering did speak to it, so, but. Okay, so I'm not gonna read this in the record, the, Mr. Dietering did speak to it, so, but he supplied a letter with his concerns that he, he so well went over, and, and I have to note that the same letter came from Hyacinth McKenna of Groton Woods, also, 44 Diamondback, and a Mr. Jameson Dorothy, Jameson Dorothy from 73 Diamondback. So they also sent us a letter with the questions and concerns that Mr. Dietering went over. So that is in the record. So with that, nobody else with questions, concerns, or, or opposition to this application? Okay, with that, sir, the applicant, you have five minutes to come back, if you'd like, to speak in rebuttal, or anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I'll try to say to, to hopefully kind of set the, the community at ease, as of now, it's my, my wife, my three children, and my mother-in-law that are currently living in the residence. The addition of the ADU is not going to add any more people, it's not going to add any more water use, it's not gonna add any more septic use than is already being added. Obviously, that doesn't speak to the concern about precedent and anything in the future. I can't speak to how the, the property would be used 10, 20 years down the road, but as of this specific application, there are already six people living in the residence, and we're already using the same, the, the use resources won't change.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Mr. Dietering, you now have an opportunity to come back for five minutes, if you'd like, or you can.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to blow this guy out of.
All right. So, so, Mr. Dietering, who had questions, or had questions about the application, has decided to knock him up, so I will close the public hearing and open the, the public meeting. Mr. Karia.
I'm favorable to the application. I think it meets all the criteria. It is perhaps our first ADU within a big condominium association, but as Mr. Lionel had spoken to, and I, when I went to look at it, and having been in, 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 living in a condominium association previously, I don't think that, you know, if the condominium association could enact in its bylaws if it wanted to, to restrict ADU, that's well within their measure. I don't believe it falls upon this board. And my sense is, well, we have testimony that there's five people there in the house, and, and, and someone's not being added. So I, I didn't think one additional person would impact the septic, that that's not even the case. So in short, I think it meets the criteria, and, and I'm good with it.
I also support the application. It fits right in. Again, met all the criteria, so I, I think, again, I'm in favor. Mr. McKear.
I'm not voting on this one, but I, I think, I would also agree. Application, I think, meets the criteria. I, I would say, though, that I, I'm not familiar with how the septic system was designed, but the fact that it is a septic, that we have common septic systems, I think, is something for us to consider. And I'd just throw out, if those who are voting or making motions might entertain a stipulation that the building department confirm that the septic system is adequately sized to support the additional unit. But I throw that out there as a thought.
Mr. Lionel.
I'm in support of the application. As, as others have said, it meets all of the requirements. There, you know, if it, this wasn't in the, if it was just a regular, single-family home, there would really be no question whatsoever. I think the issue about the septic would be best handled just by the building department in their normal course of, of business. I don't see that a stipulation is necessary in this case.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Boris?
I'm also in favor. It meets all the criteria, and again, I don't believe we should stipulate either. The planning, you know, would take the next step, the building department.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
Since I'm clerk, I'll, I'm more apt just to write instead of speak, kind of move things along, so thank you for making the motion.
Sure. Okay. Like to make a motion. Owner is Kathleen Paulson. Applicant is Christopher Long. Address is 27 Serata Avenue. Sheet D, Lot 22, requesting special exception, Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 3, to allow an accessory or in-law dwelling unit, this is in the R40 zone, and Ward 5. This is listed in the table of uses. The board believes that will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian We believe that this will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal. Excuse me, please hold conversations outside, because we can hear everything you're saying. They went outside. They went out to the.
They went outside, okay.
I just said the water wasn't shut all day. Oh, I didn't see. Okay. Or other municipal system. We have testimony that all the special regulations are fulfilled, and the board believes this will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health morals of, of welfare of residents. Therefore, I make a motion to approve this special exception.
I think Ms. Boris had her, her hand up.
Second.
Second by Ms. Boris. Any discussion? So, Mr. Lionel, I assume that the special regulations, you're, you're referring to the accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
Regulations, okay. Good. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the application? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application's been approved. Just be aware, there's a 30-day window of approval of, of, there's a 30-window, window, so they can contest it, but highly unlikely. Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close case number two, and open the public hearing for case number three. Case number three is John Card and Pamela Cox, 16 Pollard Road. Description is John Card and Pamela Cox. Owners is 16 Pollard Road, Sheet C, Lot 1281, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 2.3 feet into the 10-foot required left-side yard setback to construct an 18-by-38-foot garage. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 9. Welcome. Just give us your name and address for the record, please. And then you can pull that mic over to speak into it, if you just want to pull it over, so we can both get you, right? And that could be pulled out, if you'd like to.
That's all right.
All right.
I'm used to bending over.
John Card, 16 Pollard Road.
Pamela Cox, 16 Pollard Road.
All right, so why don't you tell us what you, just kind of tell us what you want to do. We got your, we have your application.
Okay. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. What we're looking to do is build a two-car garage, add it on to the side of the house where the current entryway is into the kitchen. Within the garage, the cars will be going front to back, because we don't have a lot of property on the side. The entryway will remain inside of the garage, so that you can come in, get out of the car, and go into the house without going onto ice. The very back left-hand corner, if you're looking at the garage of where we're proposing to build, it is the corner that's going into the setback zone to our neighbor's house. It's not the full side of the garage, it's the, from about halfway and into the back corner. The property line, the way the property line in the front of the house, it's a little crooked, so going straight back does have the back corner encroaching slightly into the zone. We do have my elderly mother that lives with us, she's in her 70s, and she does tend to fall every year on the ice, so we did not want to make the garage smaller and change the entryway to the house. That way, she could get out of the car and go into the side of the house without slipping on the ice on the driveway. So that's why it's a little bit wider than, than one car. There's just enough room for the walkway to go in, and then to be able to open the doors of a car parked next to it.
Okay, sounds straightforward.
Okay.
Is that it?
I think that's all, yeah. It's very basic, too, and the builder's gonna match it to the way that the house looks, smaller, but similar to other garages in the neighborhood currently.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Karia.
It seems to me that if you had more room on that side of the house, you'd probably just have a more standard squared garage, but I was just clarifying that since you're trying to respect the side yard setback, you're going thinner at 18 feet and longer, and, and again, you're only proposing to nick into the side yard setback in that back corner of the garage.
That's correct. We could not go side to side, and that is the reason that we were going front to back with the two cars.
Okay.
It's currently us, our two daughters and my mother, our older daughter's going off to college, so there will still be four of us in three cars.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Shaw, sorry.
I thought I saw this in the application, but it just, I think it's just gonna be single-story, right?
Yes, single-story.
There's not any plans for anything above the garage.
It is single-story. There's just a step up to go into the kitchen.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You can have a seat. Is anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Come on up, sir, give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jason Varney. I live at 14 Pollard Road. I'm one of the Butters, so if you're looking at their proposed garage, I'll be to the left, so I'm probably the one most impacted. I have no problem with the design. I see no impact to my property or the way it looks, so I would approve it as stand for what I've seen.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Thanks for coming tonight and let us know. It puts my mind at ease that the Butter who's most impacted is fine with it, so thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in support of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
This is straightforward, and I'm in support.
I, I would agree. I think, as we said before, a garage is a reasonable and customary use. I think in looking at the property, there's really no other place where they could locate it. I, I did question the width, but I think there was a reasonable explanation as to the side entry, and of course, they designed it as a tandem garage to minimize the impact, so I support the application.
And likewise, I support anything further. If, if it wasn't for just the slight twist or rotation of the house versus the lot, it looked like they could have gotten it in there without this, but just that, just that little bit is causing this couple-feet encroachment, so I'm, I'm good with it.
I'm fine for all the reasons stated.
I am also. Does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Shaw.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owners John Card and Pamela Cox of 16 Pollard Road, for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 2.3 feet into the 10-foot required left-side yard setback to construct an attached 18-foot-by-38-foot garage. This is in the R9 zone. The variance is needed for the, to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property to add a two-car garage, which is fairly common in this neighborhood, but due to combination of the width of the lot, the placement of the house, the only reasonable place to put the garage is on the left side, but doing the tandem garage alleviates part of the concern, but because the, the placement of the house versus the lot, it's not perfectly square, such that by this addition, can meet the 10-foot at the beginning of the placement, but then has increasing encroachment up to 2.3 feet in the, the back corner of the garage. So there's no other reasonable means to pursue other than this variance. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's been no testimony regarding any negative effects of surrounding property values. It's not contrary to public interest. Substantial justice will be served, and I move to approve this area of variance.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Your application's been approved. Have a good night. With that, I'll close case number three.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I could, my, for the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offset 20 Felfelder Square in Ashford, and here this evening, representing John Flatley. So that people don't stay much longer, we would like to withdraw our, our request for variance.
Okay, thank you. So we don't have to take any action, right? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You want to announce it, to make sure it's clear to the crowd.
So, so, so the applicant, the applicant is withdrawing his application for variance, for case number six. So we will not be hearing case number six, they have withdrawn their application.
Which is the John Flatley Company, 200 Innovative Way.
We're gonna take a five-minute break. Yeah. It'll be five minutes anyhow. opposed.
Wait, I don't, I don't think he caught that.
Mics are open.
Yep.
Okay, mics are open.
So I'll start, I'll start again.
Okay.
All right. So come back to the session. We'll open the public hearing for case number four. The owner is Matthew and Leah Donahue, Four Cushing Ave. Description is Matthew J. and Leah R. Donahue, owners of Four Cushing Avenue, sheet sixty-four, lot one oh four, requesting a variance from land use code section one ninety dash two sixty-four to exceed maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, sixty-one percent proposed to install a seventeen foot by thirty-one foot, six inch in-ground swimming pool. It's in the IRB Zone Ward Three. Welcome. Give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Thank you very much. Matt Donahue, Four Cushing Ave.
Leah Donahue, same address, Four Cushing Ave.
One last introduction.
Olivia King, same address.
Welcome.
So, thank you, yes. So I appreciate the time today. We're actually just looking to exceed the accessory land use by the additional twenty-one percent to install a swimming pool. As far as, we don't see that there be any issues, any conflict with the spirit of the ordinance, no harm to the general public, and we do see that it would increase the value of the house and the building homes surrounding it. As far as the number five of the special conditions, I did submit what the special conditions were in the applications. We actually, we can go into that. We also do have a letter from our pediatrician that can further explain our reasoning for the request. We can, we can read it, too.
This is from my daughter's pediatrician. Her name is Ann Dobbins, M.D. She states, "To whom it may concern, Olivia King is a patient of mine at St. Joseph's Hospital Pediatrics Practice in Nashua. She has a condition called osteogenesis imperfecta type three, otherwise sometimes known as brittle bone disease. She has sustained innumerable fractures in most cases after minimal to no trauma. Swimming is one of the few physical activities she can participate in, which do not place her at excessive risk of fractures. It also helps with her physical therapy after her many fractures. Frequent access to a controlled swimming environment, a pool, is a medical necessity for Olivia." On top of that, if I may speak freely about some of the other considerations, so on top of the physical therapy aspect of that, going into a public pool poses a lot of danger to Olivia because of the kids jumping and splashing and swimming around and just the environmental aspects of being in a pool with other people. In addition to that, the social aspects that she benefits from, whereas we're not playing outside in the backyard with basketballs and baseballs and other typical sports, this is her sport. This is why friends would be coming to the house. We would elongate our season for outdoor activities that way, starting in early spring, going through October, enabling ourselves to have exercise in an area out back that she would utilize as her backyard. It would now be available to her to be able to go out and play in, such as other children might do on grass, per se.
In working with the planning department, all the setbacks have been satisfied, six feet from the butters, and I believe everything else has been satisfied of the application.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Lionel.
I believe there's some regulations about protective fence, and will you meet those regulations?
Yes, we'll be, we'll be, we do have the requirements from the city to have protective fence around the pool, in gates and things of that nature.
They would have to get a fence anyway around the pool.
Yeah, the property's already completely fenced in with very tall fencing, so that's...
It just didn't say in the application, so I thought I'd ask.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing, seeing, seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
Just to clarify, it's Mr. Knakis, just as a reminder.
Right, right. I'm in favor of the application. I think sometimes we see some of these use areas. I think a pool is a, is a normal thing that, that a lot of, some homeowners, you know, half of us would like to have. I would love to have an in-ground pool if I could afford it, but that's kind of really great. So I think it's a normal type accessory to have in your yard. And again, we see properties that sometimes, you know, depending on size of the home and size of the property, you know, the percentages don't work out correctly. But I think in this case, I think it's a, it's a fair use. And notwithstanding, I think there's an extra benefit here, obviously, that it will help somebody with their physical activities that's needed. So I think that's, you know, it's a win-win situation. So again, I am full support of the application. Mr. Lionel.
I'm in full support.
Mr. Shaw.
I am, too. And this is another one of these cases where, because it's a detached garage, we end up in, you know, if it was attached, I bet they probably wouldn't even have to be here in front of us. So it's, I know it's the nature of the way our code is written, but, so it is, I think that the usage would, could be just the same if it happened to be an attached garage, and it wouldn't even be a concern. So, but I'm totally in support.
Mr. McCarroll.
I'm in support also, but I would just also add that it appears that there are a number of other properties in the area that also exceed the maximum use area requirement.
Thank you.
I'm in support. I also wanted to note that, you know, the properties that might be impacted if there was an impact, like on the backyard, the, homes are situated far away, and just from walking, you know, doing a sidewalk, it didn't appear to me that this overage is even going to be observable to anyone other than to Google Map. So I think I'm in full support.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for Matthew and Leah Donahue, Four Cushing Ave. Description is Matthew J. and Leah R. Donahue, owners of Four Cushing Ave., sheet sixty-four, lot one oh four, requesting a variance from land use code section one ninety dash two sixty-four to exceed maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, sixty-one percent proposed to install a seventeen foot by thirty-one foot, six inch in-ground swimming pool. It's in the IRB Zone Ward Three. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, we spoke about the fact that the way the calculations are determined based on accessory units, there's a detached garage. So most likely, this is why this becomes an issue for us to look at as far as the percentage overage. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. We find that it is in the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We will, it will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interests, and substantial justice would be served. Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Application's approved. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number four and open the public hearing for case number five. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is that, is that your water bottle or somebody else's? Okay.
If you see that gentleman, he just left.
Yeah.
Let him know his water bottles here. That's up to him.
Oh, here he comes.
So I'd like to open the public hearing for case number five, which is for Janet and Ike Matty of twelve Waters Edge Drive. The description is Janet A. and Ike Matty, owners of twelve Waters Edge Drive, sheet H, lot one eighty-nine, requesting a variance from land use code section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three, to encroach six feet into the twenty foot required right yard, right side yard setback to construct and attach twenty-four by twenty-four two-car garage. It's in the R eighteen zone, Ward Two. Before you get started, ma'am, I think we need to have a just short discussion on this case. So the advertisement is what you, is what you see here. Actually, what's really going on is if you look at your drawing of the garage, the applicant, and again, this is a conversation with Mr. Fock earlier today, I'm just getting some clarification, the garage is actually going to be twenty-seven feet deep, okay? So what happens here is we are looking at encroaching in a side yard setback. So we're not encroaching in the rear yard setback, so the extra length of the garage does not affect the rear yard setback. But certainly, there's three more linear feet. The garage is three feet longer. So the question is, to the, to the board here, is whether or not we accept this as it is, or we, we re-advertise, have to re-advertise for the correct dimensional. So the incursion on the side yard setback is, will be no different. The applicant, in the application, there's also, to just be clear, it says twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot garage. And I say, hey, on the drawing, it says twenty-seven by twenty-eight. Mr. Fock indicated that no matter what that is, the side yard incursion is the same. It's, so again, there's some dimensions here, but what we, what the real crux, crux of matters, or the real point is, is that the side yard incursion is what they're asking for, and it's for the length of the garage. And they're proposing twenty-seven feet as opposed to the twenty-four feet as advertised. So again, I put this to the board, and that would be, you know, would be whether or not we move forward, or do we need to re-advertise? Mr. Lionel.
I'm, I'm still confused, because the description here says twenty-four by twenty-four.
Right.
And the drawing says twenty-seven by twenty-eight. So how, how does that?
Mr. Fock will explain.
Okay. Well, when we got the application in, we saw the language and the hardship that it was going to be a twenty-four by twenty-four foot two-car garage. Then we saw the drawing at twenty-seven by twenty-eight. So I called them just to check and verify which one it is. And it was indicated to me that it was going to be a twenty, a twenty-seven by twenty-eight garage, but we had already advertised it as twenty-four by twenty-four. But it's the same encroachment to the setback. It's still a six-foot encroachment, whether it's, you know, whatever, whatever the size is, it's still the same encroachment. So that's correct. That's always been correct. And I know the one abutter on the garage side wrote a letter of support, that they're, they're in favor of it. And there's no other butters that have called or asked about it. So you can almost look at it as a little Scrivener's error, a little thing, thing like that. But it's the same encroachment. The neighbor is also aware of that encroachment as well. I think the neighbors also are okay with it, so.
I just want to point out that in step five of the application, it says twenty-four by twenty-four.
It does say that there. But there was a map. This drawing did say.
The drawing says.
Twenty-seven by twenty-eight. That's why I called to say which one was it. And there's just a little mix-up, but it's still the same encroachment, so.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I want to just make sure we talk through is that the, and I think the fact that it's no different encroachment is, is the major factor. But I know anytime I see, you know, the statement, the scope and scale of whatever an addition or, well, typically an addition, you know, something that, you know, that can perhaps at least color the way I would look at something, and I think that might be at least somewhat normal. Now, we're not talking about something advertised as twenty-four by twenty-four that's now thirty-six by forty, or, you know, the, the scope and scale is still relatively, you know, similar. So I don't think it necessarily even trying to just like kind of think through the sense of how different somebody might interpret this addition as, you know, consideration if it were to be advertised exactly as what we're now realizing it is versus what it was. So I think the fact that there's no difference in the incursion into the setback, which is the primary issue, that there is a consideration for the, what the scale of the structure is. But I think it's, we're talking about something that's kind of within the ten percent type of, of range. So I don't think that necessarily rises to a level of concern. But I just wanted to make sure we at least considered that in our discussion. And if, but if somebody thinks that's too significant, then, you know, we should, I guess, note that.
Mr. McCarroll.
I, I, I agree. I think that the difference in the size, given that the setback remains, you know, is accurate, the difference in the size, I think, would be unlikely to be, make a material difference enough for somebody to decide to come or not to come to provide testimony, or to send a letter or not send a letter. I think what is particularly instructive to me, though, is in looking at the letter of support sent by the abutter, they note that the applicant did share the construction plans with them. I have to assume those are the same plans, and that the abutter was aware that it was twenty-seven by twenty-eight. So trusting that that's true, I think that's, you know, of real, of material significance to me, at least.
Mr. Lionel.
I, I agree with what Mr. McCarroll said.
Yeah, I agree. You know, I, I would maybe suggest we ask the applicant if the abutter, you know, saw the twenty-seven by twenty-eight or the twenty-four by twenty-four, just so we have clarification on that.
Just one question. You heard what we're talking about. When you shared with the applicant, was it twenty?
That's the abutter.
Okay, so, so you're, you're good with?
I am fine with it.
Okay, so there's our answer. There's our answer. All right, so.
I'm good with it.
Okay, I'm good with it. So with that, do we need to take a vote to move forward, or just move forward with the application? And I'll, and do I reread into the new size of the garage, the accurate size of the garage?
I was going to say, I think the minutes speak for themselves and just read in the new size, the new, you know, the correct size, so we call it.
When we make the motion, two, one.
We'll, we'll make a note in the beginning of the minutes describing what happened.
And actually, it was, you did have the amended agenda where that was.
Yeah, we did change that.
I think mainly the fact that we're noting this, the minutes were reflected, that seems sufficient to me.
Okay, so we can move forward. Okay, ma'am, now we've gone through that. You're good now. All right.
Keep breathing.
Okay. So, so just give us your name and address, and tell us what's going on, what you're doing.
Okay. My name is Janet Matty.
And just, please, just pull the microphone down for the, there we go. Thank you.
My name is Janet Matty, and I live at twelve Waters Edge Drive. And I would like very much to be able to build a two-car attached garage. My neighbors are in favor of it. I really would like to not have to shovel the back deck, to get out to the shed, to get the snow blower, to get to the front yard, to do the shoveling and clean off the cars and all of that stuff. It would be really nice. And the person a couple of times earlier talked about seventy, being elderly, it is not, okay? It is, it's not. Getting close to that, and it's not. But it would be nice to not have to worry about ice outside. And sometimes, actually, we have problems in the neighborhood that people will try to get into cars during the night to see if there's anything that they can get. And one time, I had my car, the back window, BB'd out, and it would be nice to have it be safer inside. Aesthetically, it would fit in with the other houses in the neighborhood. It's not a two-story, it's just one story. And I'd, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Carter.
It's not really a question. I thought all those people were here because it was not advertised as twenty-four by twenty-four.
I was just going to come up and start with that and say, I thought they were for me. But I thought, no, be polite. But yes.
I don't have a question.
Okay. Mr. McCarroll.
Twenty, twenty-seven by, by twenty-eight is, you know, a large two-car garage. Can you speak to why you want, or want or need a garage of that size?
Well, we have, when you, when you were to drive in the garage, we have a chimney there, which means that that's going to take up a little bit of space, and you want to be able to open and close the car doors. I'd like to be able to put the trash barrel inside as opposed to outside. And also in the back, I'd like to be able to fit the snow blower and also lawnmower. And we're going to have it, because of the, the chimney there, we would have an entrance in the back of the garage to be able to go into the house. And it's just to be able to have a little bit more space in the, in the back. But that doesn't affect the setback in the back.
Anything else? Anybody else? Anybody else with any other questions? Thank you ma'am. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this application?
Sure, why not?
Come on up. Just your name and address, please.
My name is Susan Picard, and I live at 14 Waters Edge Drive, directly next door to where she'll be building the garage. And my husband and I are more than happy to, I think it'll look nice, and she's been very good at having to shovel all these years, and I felt bad for her too. But we have plenty of space between yards that will be just fine to us, so.
Any questions for Mrs. Picard? Thank you ma'am for coming. Okay, there is nobody else in the audience, so I don't think there's anybody else to speak in favor or opposition. Mr. Shaw?
Let me just note that the letter from Mrs. Picard's husband was in.
So there's a letter from Mr. Jerry Picard that came in that was, was in support of the application, pretty much Mrs. Picard did speak to that. Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Curry.
I just wanted to note, you know, most, if not all, the other houses on this street have two-car garages. Interestingly enough, you know, I noted that when I drove up and down, so I, you know, even though this is a bit larger, and I was wondering that myself, thank you for asking that, I think it makes sense with the chimney and especially, you know, the testimony that there's still plenty of room. I don't think it'll look tight on that right side. It'd actually look more like the other houses when a garage is present there. So I'm in favor of it as it's proposed. I think it meets the criteria.
I'm also in favor of the application. Mr. Shaw?
It also looks like a number of the other homes might already be encroaching into the side yard setbacks from garages, so I think it even also as well might, might be very similar to some of what's going on already.
Anybody else? Anybody else, would anybody like to make a motion? Would you?
Not prepared to do that.
No, that's no problem.
All right, I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion for Janet and Ike Matty of 12 Waters Edge Drive. Description is Janet A. and Ike Matty owners of 12 Waters Edge Drive Sheet H Lot 189, requesting variance from land use code section 190-16 Table 16-3 to encroach six feet into the 20-foot required right side yard setback to construct and attach 27 by 28 two-car garage. It's in the R18 Zone War II. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's use of the property given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. The applicant did discuss the fact that there's an existing chimney that would be inside the garage, hence why she's looking for the encroachment. And then we had positive testimony from the direct neighbor that this is no, there's no detrimental effect on, again, we find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, it will not adversely affect the property values and surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. Second by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Mrs. Boris is voting on this one. All those in favor? Five to nothing. Congratulations. Your application's approved. Have a great night.
You were so helpful in everything. I'm the first one ever to write anything like this, and you were very helpful, and this warrior was really helpful also.
Very much. Appreciate it. Our pleasure.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
You too.
Okay, we have some meeting minutes from July 23rd. Does anybody see any issues with that or have any corrections they'd like to make?
Just interesting, there was that one part that Eric says, like, some discussion was on audible or something like, but I.
Little things we had, little cards readers we had, it was very hard to pick up a lot of the testimony, and did the best we could with it. So there may have been some sentences, and I couldn't, I just really couldn't understand, so.
And I think that to that point, Mr. Curry, I, you know, I'm, I have, I'm a little hard of hearing, and so I admit that, but I also know that there are some applicants that talk very softly. It's sometimes, I don't know if all you have, we have sometimes difficulty in picking that up, and I don't know if someday that this, you know, there's ever been improvements, it would be great to have something amplified, but I do struggle sometimes to hear what people are saying.
Yeah.
I recall that was a particular issue at that meeting too, for some reason.
Yeah, there was a few people that were very soft spoken, and we asked them to speak up, and it didn't kind of go there, so.
Couple of the applicants here, or the, a couple of people in the audience were saying that they couldn't hear at all back there, so.
Well, I've noticed just listening here is that if we speak directly at the microphone, I can hear it coming from the speakers there, but if you turn off to the side a little bit, it doesn't pick it up as much. So we might need to be careful.
To speak.
To speak directly into the microphone and not turn off to the side.
That's what the one woman was saying, that we might need them closer than what we normally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That might help also.
So is there any other, any other input, Mr. Curry?
No, I mean, I wasn't at the meeting, but I guess I was just looking a little bit for those who are here to maybe get some reassurance that if some, you know, there wasn't anything critically lost, or I don't know if there's anything we can do other than just note it and move on, really.
Really, that one case, I found it most difficult, but the rest of the meeting, it was like a 20 or 30-minute time period of the minutes that we were redoing that it was hard to hear, hard to make out what people were saying, but.
I'm not sure if we can do anything other than just move on because that's, that's what we have, and so at least we've noted and discussed it, and that's all we can do to record it, you know?
We have nobody come back to dispute or to have any issues with that meeting, so. All right, so I would say that we take a vote on it. So I'll make a motion to approve the July 23rd, 2019 meeting minutes. Mr. Knackus raised his hand, so, second by Mr. Knackus. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes would be, will have, so Mr. Knackus was the next one in the round. Oh, Mr. Mancara. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, actually it would be Mr. Mancara.
Sorry. So we have to go back, seconded by, will somebody second in the meeting minutes, Mr. Lionel? Sorry, Mr. Knackus. So seconded, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes? Mr. Mancara?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry about that.
I have a problem.
All right. Any other business we have? We have an agenda for next meeting. Does anybody see any regional impact?
Nope.
It's all pretty much inside the city. Okay, so no regional impact? Any, no regional impact?
Yep.
Yep.
And that's unanimous?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Seconded by Mr. Lionel. All those in favor? Okay, so we're adjourned at 8:08.